All right, I would like to call to order this organizational meeting of the Bloomington Common Council for Wednesday, January 10, 2024. And will the Clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Rana. Rosenbarger. Stossberg. Rallo. Piedmont Smith. Zulik. Assari. Flaherty. Ruff. Thank you.
Thank you, Clerk Bolden. I am starting the meeting as the presiding officer because I'm the vice president from last year, and our president is no longer on the council, so just to explain why. I'm starting the meeting, and I wanted to continue with our labor and land acknowledgement. We recognize that the city of Bloomington sits on native land. The city, as well as city administrative buildings, are on the traditional homelands of the Miami, Delaware, Potawatomi, and Shawnee people, and we acknowledge they are past, present, and future caretakers of this land. We also acknowledge that much of the economic progress and development in Indiana and in Bloomington resulted from the unpaid labor and forced servitude of people of color, specifically enslaved African labor. We acknowledge that this land remains home to and a site of gathering and healing for many Indigenous and other people of color, and we commit to the work necessary to create and promote a more equitable and just Bloomington. We move forward knowing and acknowledging our rich, complicated, and sometimes painful pasts so that we can learn from it and create a true land of opportunity. All right, now I will just summarize our agenda for the evening. We will have reports from council members, then we will have reports from the mayor and city offices, and I think tonight that's mainly introductions and greetings from new and continuing mayoral appointees and the mayor herself. Then we have reports from council committees, if there are any, and then we have our first opportunity for public comment on items not on the agenda. We will then move on to election of officers for 2024. After that, assignments to city council committees, and then appointments to boards and commissions on which council members serve. Then we will have an additional period of public comment on items not on the agenda. We will discuss any matters of council schedule that may be necessary to discuss, and then we will move to adjourn. So, we will start with reports from council members, and it will start on my right with Councilmember Rana. Do you have a report this evening?
No, I don't, thank you.
Councilmember Rosenbarger.
No report, thank you.
Councilmember Stossberg.
I do have a report this evening. I just want to say that I have started scheduling constituent meetings, so I'm going to have constituent meetings on third Saturday mornings at 11:00 as a regularly occurring thing. They're going to be held here in City Hall in the McCloskey Room next door, and right now those are just going to be in person on the third Saturdays, but as the year goes on, I'm going to schedule other constituent meetings at other times of day, other locations, other formats, so you should be on the lookout for those. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rallo.
Yes, I should take the opportunity to, well, first of all, to welcome everybody, old and new, and looking forward to working with you in the next term of office, and welcome to Mayor Thompson, looking forward to working with you. I have my constituent meeting on the third Saturday of the month, and you can reach it via Zoom, and that will be on the council's website, and it starts at 10:00 a.m. I did also want to mention something that came to mind because it's a consistent theme that's been running for some years now, and it was brought to my attention again tonight, this afternoon, by Eric Spoonmore, CEO and President of the Bloomington Chamber of Commerce. And the subject is public safety. This is obviously a very important service provided by the city, central service, and I and some of my colleagues over the years have been calling attention to the fact that it's inadequate. It's inadequate because of inadequate pay and inadequate essentially facilities, I think, or the facilities that are, I'll get to that in a moment. Let's just focus on the pay, which renders us noncompetitive vis-à-vis other communities. And this puts us in a very unfortunate situation of being understaffed. Understaffing means that there is usually overtime. Officers are courted away by other communities. That means that we have new trainees that have to go through the training here, which is very stringent. We have good training, but it is penny wine, it's foolish. It's foolish not to bring the resources to bear that they need. So this is one thing that I think needs to be considered by my colleagues. The other is the purchase of the showers, the backside of the showers, the west side, which was made by the former administration. I don't want to get into the specifics about good or bad for all purposes, but I think it's ill-suited for the police. I think that we need to reconsider whether this is an adequate facility for the police. They're probably better off where they are with renovations of the existing facility on Third Street. If not, then I think that we need to consider another facility with the same type of security, the same type of access ingress egress that allows the police to function appropriately because as it stands now, the west side of the showers is ill-suited for that. So I would just call for that consideration of my colleagues and the administration as we go forward this year, and I'll be bringing it up again in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Rallo. Now we'll go to my left. Councilmember Ruff, do you have a report?
A couple of words real quickly. First of all, I'm not sure what Councilmember Rallo meant by "new and old" council members, but coming from the oldest council member, I'll take it, I'm not sure how, but given that we have over 40 years of difference between our oldest and younger council members, that'll be very exciting to work with that age diversity as we move forward in this term. And I just want to say that, you know, it sounds canned maybe, but it really is an honor and a privilege to be able to serve the community and represent the community in this way and have this opportunity, I'm sure all my council colleagues feel exactly the same way. And I know we're all looking forward, really forward, to working with each other, with the new administration, with community partners and citizens, with our county and state colleagues to address the pressing priorities and needs of the community. And for my part, I pledge to do everything I can to take this role on with due respect, humility, desire for consensus, and will absolutely promise that that will be my highest priority moving forward. And thank you for giving me the opportunity to say a few words.
Thank you. Councilmember Flaherty.
Report this evening, thank you.
Councilmember Assari.
Just a very brief note. First of all, it's so good to see you all here. I'm so looking forward to serving with all of you on this council. Councilmember Flaherty and I had the opportunity to go to a meeting this week, just past week, that was convened by the mayor on dealing with encampment issues. I think the mayor has been very eloquent in communicating about sort of the plans as they're developing, but the thing that I wanted to point out is how this represents a sort of whole-of-government response to things that people in this town are facing. And we are all here because we want to make the lives of people in Bloomington better, and we eagerly look forward to working not just with each other, but sort of across branches of government to do exactly that and deliver on that promise that we were all elected to do. So, with that, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Zulik.
Yes, two things. One, I just want to thank our council attorney and deputy attorney for the great work that they have done in the past, and I hope to continue to do that work with you, and obviously, Clerk Bolden. I'm looking forward to working with you, and thank you for the great work that you've already done. And finally, my predecessor, Steve Bolden, is in the seats tonight, and I remember watching you very many times during my run for office, and I've always appreciated your service, and I hope to live up to your name. So, thank you.
Thank you. And I will just give a brief report. So, I was shocked, as I know many were, by the death in an encampment yesterday where a shooting victim was found in a tent. And I think public safety is definitely a top concern in a broad sense, in the sense that not just police, but housing, jobs that pay a living wage, childcare, access to mental health services and substance use disorder treatment, these are all elements of public safety that I know that Mayor Thompson is also making this a top priority, and I look forward to working with her as a member of council as this issue has really risen to a crisis point in Bloomington. I've also heard from my new constituents in the Broadview neighborhood, that is now part of my district, that the encampments on the south side of Switchyard Park are becoming very large and unsafe. So certainly, many unhoused residents are very peaceful and are just trying to get by day-to-day, so I no means want to paint that community with a broad brush, but I think that there have been too many instances of violence, and certainly, the number of people who are experiencing homelessness and their daily struggles with their own safety and health have risen to a point that we need to urgently take action. I would also like to invite everybody to the Martin Luther King Junior Day celebration on Monday, this coming Monday, January 15, which is Martin Luther King Junior Day, at 6:00 at the Buskirk-Chumley Theater. There'll be a community celebration, and the theme this year is unlocking freedom, the transformative and liberating power of education. And we have a renowned educator, Jessie Hagapien, who is going to be the keynote speaker. And of course, many members of the community will be there to participate, including the Highland Park Elementary School Choir and the African-American Choral Ensemble from IU, so those are always a treat to hear. Then I also have a constituent meeting coming up. I will maintain the same schedule as in previous years. I will have them on the second Saturday of the month at 11:00 a.m., and I am moving to just online meetings this year because I spent many first of many second Saturdays sitting alone in the McCloskey Room and just talking to people on Zoom. So I think that it seems to be most convenient for people to have the online meetings. So that meeting link is posted on the city council page, bloomington.in.gov/council. All right, now we will move on to reports from the mayor and city offices, so I invite Mayor Thompson and any of her administration to come forward and just kind of introduce themselves. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for having us all here tonight. I know there are many people who are joining me, and I felt like applauding when you called the meeting to order, Isabel. It is a new year, a new chapter, and already before the meeting, as Councilmember Assari mentioned, we've been working together. And I am looking forward to a government that works together and works for our residents. And I want to just make a couple of notes. We have had a fast and busy week and a half in City Hall already and outside of City Hall, and I couldn't be more honored or excited to serve as your mayor. And I know there are lots of people who are really enthused at the council that we've elected, the most diverse council, and really a council that I think is driven to do well for our city. So I'm looking forward to working with you on items we agree about, items we disagree about. I am looking forward to having your ideas improve mine, and hopefully vice versa. And I know our team is really just mission-driven and working incredibly hard, and the last nine or 10 days here in City Hall, it's been a deep privilege to meet the dedicated city employees that have been working, some of them for decades and decades, and many invisible to others in the community, but that's how our streets get salted, and that's how we address safety concerns, and we collaborate and plan for our future. So, looking forward to a great year, and I will introduce Deputy Mayor Gretchen Knapp.
Hi, everyone. I'm really looking forward to working with all of you. It's an incredible honor to be here, and as Mayor Thompson said, I think we've both just been blown away by how warm and welcoming and helpful everyone in the City Hall and out all around the city, all the other employees who aren't here in City Hall have been, in helping us get oriented, sharing their very frank concerns, helping us understand what's working well, where the successes are, and I just really look forward to supporting your work and learning how we can collaborate and make Bloomington the absolute best it can be. I'll pass it on to Jane. Sure. So nobody else wants to stand up? So, all right, so we'll start here, Jane Cooper Smith, who is the new Director of Economic and Sustainable Development. Margie Rice, who is Corporate Counsel. Shar Pecheck, who is Head of HR. And Jessi McClellan, who is our new Controller. Anyone else want to come up and say a word? No? Carry on.
All right, thank you very much, and welcome, and thank you for being here tonight. We look forward to working with all of you. All right, we now move on to our first period of public comment. May I see a show of hands of the people who would like to give a comment this evening on items not on the agenda? Okay, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 here in chambers. Do we have anybody on Zoom that has raised their hand? Attorney Lucas?
Not quite yet. I do have one comment that came in through the chat, but if there are others that would like to speak, please raise your hand in Zoom. You can find the raise hand feature in your control bar either under the Reactions tab or the More tab, and if you can't locate that raise hand feature, please send a chat to the meeting host. And I do see one hand raised since I've been speaking.
Okay, so we have six in all, it seems like, at this point, so I'm afraid I will have to limit the time because we have a total of 20 minutes for this period, so three minutes per person. And of course, there will be another opportunity towards the end of the meeting. So if you are here in chambers, if you could go ahead and kind of line up over at the podium, we'll start with people here in chambers, and you can state your name for the record, and I think Clerk Bolden, is there a sign-up sheet as well? Yes, please be sure to write your name on the sheet there at the podium as well.
All right. Good evening. My name is Jen Pearl, and I'm the President of the Bloomington Economic Development Corporation. We're a nonprofit. We serve all of Monroe County. Our core belief is that economic vitality creates opportunities for everyone, and our mission is really to create quality jobs and raise wages in our community. I just wanted to say hello this evening and say how much we look forward to working with you all. We partner very regularly with all three of our local governments on things like expanding local jobs, like we did with Phoenix this past year, attracting new companies, like with Enhanced Semiconductors, raising wages, but also making sure that people in this community can connect to those opportunities. So we really look forward to learning from you all about what your constituents need, how we can connect them to the opportunities we're creating, and how we can create a brighter future together. So I just wanted to say thank you for your service, and we look forward to working with you.
Thank you, Ms. Pearl. Next speaker here in chambers, and then we'll go to the Zoom person.
Hello, everyone. This is Maggie Jin. I'm a water from the Chinese-American community. After arriving in Bloomington 13 years ago for IU, I run my own financial services firm. I promise, this is not a commercial, okay? Okay, so last year, I founded the Chinese Chamber of Commerce with probably 40 business owners, including 31 restaurant owners and nine others, okay? So most businesses situated in Bloomington area with one in Allensville, so I'm still counting all the business owners, okay? Now, yeah, that's the number I have. Our chamber's formal name is the Southern Indiana Bloomington Chinese Chamber of Commerce, Inc. So we also have received, we have also received the interest from business owners in Benford, Columbus, and Vincent's. Additionally, there are some business owners from Chinese ancestors, like Burmese, Vietnamese, yet to be counted for, okay? The majority of our owners are first-generation immigrants, like me, okay, facing language barriers, so the chamber's mission is to connect them and convey their concerns to the city. So in our meetings, many owners stressed the need for bilingual safety and a distinguished service company for improved communication. They expressed gratitude from the Chinese driver license exam provided by BMW and the presence of Chinese physicians at IU Hospital, and interpretation service from the IU medical system, highlighting the importance of distinguished services, especially for the restaurant owners. So please pass this concern to the fire department. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Please be sure to write your name on the sign-up sheet there, so we have it for the record. Thank you for your comments. Now let's go to Zoom. Mr. Lucas, is there somebody on Zoom who would like to comment?
Yes, we have Jim Shelton.
Good evening, council. Yes, my name is Jim Shelton. I'm speaking to you tonight on behalf of the Court-appointed Special Advocates, or CASA, program. For those who don't know, CASAs are volunteers who work with children whose families are in the court system because the parents have abused or neglected their children. We need volunteers to work with these children. They advocate for the children, they serve as a separate set of eyes and ears for the court to help usually Judge Harvey know what is going on with the child and with their parents. Is the child safe, or children, sometimes there's obviously more than one? Are they safe in getting the services they need? And then are the parents doing the things that they need to do to be reunited with their children? So I invite people to think about this. It's a great volunteer opportunity, and unfortunately, right now, we have 47 children that we do not have a volunteer to assign. So the winter training is upcoming. It'll be on, it'll start on February 6 and run through March 7. It's going to be in the afternoons for the first time, so this will hopefully make it available to a different group of people. It'll be Tuesdays and Thursday afternoons from 1:00 to 4:00. Applications will be due January 24. So if you're interested, the way to get involved is to go online to monroecountycasa.org, click on the volunteer link, you can find a bunch of information, and you can apply to become a CASA right there online, or you can download it and fill it out and mail it in. And then you'd be interviewed by the staff, and then you'd go through the training. It'll be about 30 hours of training on the dates that I just told you, and then you'd be signed in and have a case signed to you. You would work that with a CASA staff person. So it's a wonderful way to be involved with the community. It'll help children, and it's something that you can do without any special background. The training will tell you what you need to do. Your previous background doesn't make any difference, they'll teach you what you need. And as I said, you'll work it with the staff. So I ask people to think about that. As I said, we've got 47 children that we don't have a volunteer for, and again, this training will be upcoming pretty soon. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll return to the council chambers, so please state your name, and you'll have up to three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Maria Douglas. I'm a 30-year resident, don't do any math here, of Monroe County. Some of you may know me as the Development Director for Millaway House, but I'm here in a different capacity. So first of all, congratulations to the new administration. I really appreciate an administration who understands empathy and understands that words that we choose matter. And congratulations, this is an exciting day, the first meeting of the most diverse city council, and the other reason why I'm here, to let you know that today Hoosier Asian American Power launched. Hoosier Asian American Power, also known as HAP, is a nonpartisan civic organization that champions community-centered policymaking and voter education, voter mobilization, and protection as a pathway to equity and justice. Formerly, this was National Asian Pacific American Women's Forum, NAPFOF, but we will continue to focus on issues specific to Asian Americans in Indiana and advocate for just and equitable policies that best serve our local residents. And so our mission is to ignite Indiana's Asian Americans to build grassroots power and champion the policies for visionary change. So we hope to work with Maggie and anyone else that would be interested in working with us. I do want to invite everyone to the Asian Culture Center at IU on the 17th for a panel event. You can go online and find out more information about that. And then for the Hoosier Asian American Power Launch Party, that will be the 18th at the IFL Building from 5:30 to 7:00. So we are lucky to have Helen Zia, a Chinese-American journalist and activist for Asian American and LGBTQ rights, as our honored guest speaker, which will be more of an interview style, so it won't be, you know, super stiff. It would never be boring. But anyway, please visit our website, it's hoosierap.org, and follow us on Instagram, Facebook, and LinkedIn. And we are excited for the work that 2024 brings, and best wishes to everyone, and HAP looks forward to working with you. Thank you.
Thank you. And please be sure, if you haven't already, to sign in. Okay, thank you. Other people here in council chambers? State your name for the record, and you'll have up to three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Tom McLasson Jr. I am the Executive Director of what I'm excited to be here to announce tonight is now the Waste Reduction District of Monroe County, formerly the Monroe County Solid Waste Management District. So a part of that is a new name, a new logo, new website, that, thank you, Mr. Lucas, is going to get up here for shortly. And this is, it took us a while to get here, it took a lot of time, effort, and input from members of our board, our Citizens Advisory Committee, and our staff, but we're excited about this change. Waste districts were formed by state statute in 1990 or '91, and the core of the statutory mission of the organizations is to reduce the amount of waste going to final disposal. And we really think that this new name and this new image really helps or better projects who we are and what it is that we're trying to do and what our goals are. For residents that use our facilities, our programs, our services, really should not see any change in how we operate. There's going to be no changes in what we provide or how we operate our services, but bear with us over the next few weeks. We have some new signage going up, some changes related to the rebranding we need to make at those facilities, but we'll get that done, and we hope that everybody likes the change. I do have two things, two changes I'd like to announce for the public that are not related to the rebranding that we will be making. The first is, in working with one of the vendors we use for recyclables, we're going to consolidate our paper consolidation, so we will not have different types of paper going in different bins at our collection facilities. in different bins at our collection facilities. It's all just gonna be one mixed paper bin, which we hope will be much simpler for the users of those facilities. The other one is a bigger change. Our bulky item schedule is gonna go to a monthly rotation at our four rural recycling centers. Currently, we're on a weekly rotation, but beginning the second week of February, when those bins would do their normal rotation to our West Side facility on Ord Road, they're gonna remain there for the remainder of the month of February. And then in March, we'll go to our South Side facility on Dillman Road. In April, our Northeast facility in New Unionville out on Bethel Lane. And then in May, we'll come to Ellettsville, and we'll continue that rotation on a monthly basis for the remainder of the year, which does allow us to eliminate the handful of weeks, excuse me, we've had each year where those services have not been available. So they will be available year-round when those facilities are open on a monthly rotation. Thank you.
Thank you. Other public comments here in chambers? Anybody else here in the council chambers wish to give a public comment? Okay, seeing none, Mr. Lucas, do we have anybody else on Zoom?
No, no additional hands raised, just one written comment that came in through the chat from Sam Dove, who wished to share the following announcement related to the West Second Street Modernization and Safety Improvement Project. He shares that the project consists of various improvements to West Second Street between the Beeline Trail and South Walker Street. A two-way protected bike lane will be constructed, two existing traffic signals will be replaced, and modernized new storm sewer and drainage improvements will be installed, and accessible sidewalks, curb ramps, and bus stops will be provided as part of the project. Please visit the project website for more information. A public meeting for this project will be held on Tuesday, January 23rd, 2024, at 6:00 PM at the Bloomington First Church of the Nazarene, which is located at 700 West Howe Street. Any interested members of the public are encouraged to attend. Public comment can also be submitted at any time through the project website, which And I believe that is the end of the comment.
Thank you for reading that comment from Mr. Dove. Seeing no further members of the public who would like to comment, we will move on to election of officers. So we will start with the Office of President of the City Council for 2024. Do we have any nominations for this role?
I nominate Councilmember Piedmont Smith as president.
All right, thank you. Are there any other nominations? Okay, well, I would be happy to just explain my interest in this position. We are, as has been mentioned a few times this evening already, we're at a very exciting point as a city council. We are the most diverse council in the history of the city council, as far as I know, and we have a majority of council members who did not carry over from the previous term, so we have fresh perspectives. In this context, I would be very honored to serve as council president for the year 2024. I believe I can bring a good balance of experience and new ideas to council leadership. I am starting my fourth non-consecutive term on the city council, and I've served as president once in 2010, so 14 years ago. I've served as vice president three times, 2009, 2018, and 2023. I've served one year as parliamentarian in 2020. At the end of my first term in December of 2011, Councilmember Steven Volin brought forward a proposal for the formation of standing committees. And ever since that time, I have been, I have contemplated improvements to the council's processes to increase both efficiency and public engagement. The 2011 proposal was dropped. It was taken up again in 2020. I know that several of my colleagues are interested in pursuing process reform this year, and my historical knowledge of council processes, in addition to my proven willingness to try new approaches, would make me a suitable leader during this time. Furthermore, I have excellent organizational skills. I have a good basic understanding of Robert's Rules of Order, and I have friendly relationships with the incoming mayor and with my council colleagues. I know that we can only achieve good results for our community through ongoing communication and collaboration, and I commit myself to these practices. I would appreciate the support of my colleagues to become council president for 2024. So seeing as we have no other nominees, I will ask Clerk Bolden to please call the role on the nomination for council president. Oh, I'm sorry. Let me actually, let me ask if there are any questions? Yes, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to skip questions from my colleagues. Yes, Councilmember Ruff.
Can we question and comment? Are we gonna move back to comment?
Yes.
I just wanted to say, I've served, had the privilege of serving with Councilmember Piedmont Smith in the past, and have full confidence that she'll be an excellent president, do an excellent job serving the councils and the community.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments before we go to a vote? Councilmember Stossberg.
I will also throw my support to Councilmember Piedmont Smith. She has demonstrated herself to be very organized and very well-prepared for meetings, and I really appreciate that, and somebody who's going to then lead the meeting, that she always knows what is going on, and I just really appreciate that.
Thank you. Councilmember Rana?
I wanted to add to that also and say that I appreciate the experience that you're bringing to your, to this role, having served as vice president in the previous council, and appreciate your willingness to serve in this new role. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Councilmember Osari?
As a new council member, Councilmember Piedmont Smith has honestly gone out of her way to when she did not need to, when those of us who were soon to be sworn in but had been elected, but, you know, we're in that in-between stage. And I just want to say before we vote how appreciative I am of the fact that you have gone out of your way to involve all of us in decisions that were going on, just generally giving us information, helping us get our feet sort of under us. And I think that for that reason, I am very, very happy to support you amongst many, many others. But yes, I was gonna like say, give a joke and like say that I should, you know, nominate somebody else just for fun so we could debate, but no, I think, I think it's very clear that you should be president.
Thank you. Councilmember Osari. Councilmember Zulik.
So when I was thinking about like who I thought would be a good president of council when I was elected, one of the things that's really important to me is just flexibility on ideas, openness to new perspective. And one of the things that I've noticed is that Councilmember Piedmont Smith, no matter who she's talking with, can kind of bounce ideas off of each other in a way that I think is good for a leader of this council to have. So when I have spoken with her about different ideas or different ordinances that I wanted to write for city council, she either, you know, was like, oh, that's a great idea. Let's see how we can add to it, or I hear what you're saying. This isn't necessarily the way that we can go about it legally, but here is another avenue that we can make that happen. And so I've really appreciated that, and that is why I nominated her.
Thank you very much. Any other comments or questions? All right, now we'll go to a vote. Thank you, Clerk Bolden.
Councilmember Rana? Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Stossberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Zulik?
Yes.
Osari?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
And Ruff?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you for your confidence in me. All right, we'll move on to the position as vice president. Are there any nominations for that post?
I nominate Andrew Ruff, Councilmember Andy.
Andrew Ruff.
Nomination?
All right, we have a nomination for Councilmember Andy Ruff. Are there any other nominees? Seeing none, Councilmember Ruff, would you like to make a statement?
Yes, thank you. You know, given that the, one of the responsibilities of the vice president is to take over in the event that the president can't carry out duties at that particular time, I feel like I do have something to offer in terms of experience, even though I wasn't, I didn't serve in the most recent term, but in previous terms, I had experience serving as president and vice president. And I think, I hope that that experience I can bring will, will be helpful, will be called upon and needed in, at various times. In this transition year, I just, I just think it's most important like now and for the next few months. But beyond that, and everyone will have the requisite, I think, experience to, to take over any of these roles. I think in my past terms, when I did serve, I've demonstrated commitment to communication and collaboration between the council members, and I have shown fair even-handedness in conducting duties as president or vice president. And I think I've shown in the past that I can put my own sort of personal legislative agenda and priorities on the back burner for a while to help serve the larger overall interest of the council in terms of its effectiveness and productivity. And I demonstrate I can do that. I'm happy to do that in this year if I were to serve as, as vice president. My number one priority as vice president would be to help the president create the most timely, thorough, and efficient conduit of communication and collaboration between the administration and all council members, to help facilitate that to the greatest extent that I can. And then the next step, to always work and to work constantly to promote and encourage maximal communication and collaboration between the council and the administration in addressing community priorities and needs and initiatives and legislation. So that's why I'd like to serve, and I appreciate it, my colleagues' support, serving as vice president this, this year.
Very good. Are there any comments or questions for Councilmember Ruff? Yes, Councilmember Zulik?
So, you know, in May of '23, the council, the city decided that there were a lot of changes to be made in council, and we are predominantly new city council, which is very exciting. And I think some of us might plan to run for leadership somewhere down the road, but the, the people of Bloomington showed us that they certainly wanted to see a change in city council, and I think that Andy is like the perfect combination of the newness that Bloomington has expressed, that it would like to see, and also someone who has a lot of experience being on city council, and so that is why I am excited to support him.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Councilmember Rosenbarger?
As you already know, but I would like to say publicly, I'm very grateful for your willingness to serve in this position, and I very much support you, as you said, this current year and also other years as you see fit.
Councilmember Rana?
I just wanted to add it well, as well, that I think you really bring a unique perspective with that combination of new and old, and I especially appreciate everyone who is older than me on the, on the council, as well as those who are younger than me, but I like not being the only one bringing the age up, I guess. But I just wanted to say also that I, since the, you know, since the election cycle and the campaign, I've been really struck by Andy, your attempts to really bring people together and show a very collaborative spirit, because I think one of the things that the people of Bloomington have shown us is that they're really looking for a lot of collaboration in a city council that moves issues and ideas forward and gets along, so I appreciate that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Councilmember Rallo?
I think Councilmember Ruff is adequate for the job.
For now.
Actually, he'll serve well, and he's everything that I think my colleagues have said, so. Yeah, thank you.
Well, and I was, I'll just add that I agree with Councilmember Ruff, that he and I will, will serve well together in, in these leadership positions. As a matter of fact, I believe that when Councilmember Ruff was council president in 2009, I was vice president, and then the following year, we switched roles. So we've served together in leadership positions in the past, and I would, I would welcome him to be the vice president this year. I think he will do an excellent job, and communication is key. I agree, so we will work on that. Any other comments or questions before we go to a vote? Councilmember Zulik?
I would like to amend calling Councilmember Ruff Andy. That is all. For the record.
Well, I think Councilmember Ruff is, is one of those particularly warm and friendly people, that it's hard to use the honorifics because it's just Andy, but Councilmember Ruff, yes. Clerk Bolden, could you please call the role on the vice president position?
Yes, Councilmember Rosenbarger? Stossberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Zulik?
Yes.
Osari?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Ruff?
Yes, and thank you all.
And Rana?
Yes.
All right, very good. Councilmember Ruff will serve as vice president this year, and we'll move on to the parliamentarian position. Do we have any nominations for parliamentarian?
Madam President, I would like to nominate Hopi Stossberg for City Council's 2024 Parliamentarian.
And I'd like to second that.
Wonderful. Councilmember Rosenbarger has, I mean, Councilmember Stossberg has been nominated. Are there any other nominees? All right, Councilmember Stossberg, would you like to make a statement?
Sure. Thank, thank you very much, Councilmember Rosenbarger, and Councilmember Ruff down there for the confidence that you just showed with this nomination. As somebody who's new to council, it feels like a big responsibility, and I feel ready and prepared for it. I, in order to prepare for this role as council member, I watched all of the meetings in 2023 because I wanted to familiarize myself with the process and with the procedures and how council did business. And I did that because I thought that it was important to be prepared just to sit here, not necessarily to play any other additional special role, but just to be here as part of this body. I wanted to make sure that I, I knew what was going on and that I knew how things usually worked, so that's also prepared me to serve as parliamentarian. So I would be very happy to do that, and I appreciate the opportunity to serve. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions for Councilmember Stossberg? Councilmember Flaherty?
Councilmember Stossberg, I'm glad that we're seeing newly-elected and never-having-before-served member as part of the elected officers this, this first term of the new, first year of the new term. I served as parliamentarian in my second year in office and found it a really great way to dig deep into process as well, and, and helpful in, in learning, honestly. So I think it's a great role for anybody to take on, although I've just done it that once, and excited for your, you to grow in that role. And I feel like there was something else I wanted to highlight, but I've lost it, so I'll leave it at that. Happy to support you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Councilmember Osari?
So say, say that a meeting were to go on for way too long, and we need a motion to make that meeting stop. How, how would we go about doing that?
So if you think that, or sorry, council member, sorry. I think that if that is a way that you should feel, then you could just take charge and do that. Great.
Councilmember Rana?
I had a comment. I just wanted to say that I got to know Councilmember Stossberg on the campaign trail, and we saw that you, she had the longest and hardest battle and really showed herself to be tireless and out there every single day, talking to people, getting out there canvassing, and I have no doubt that you will bring that same I have no doubt that you will bring that same tireless spirit to this endeavor also, and I'm excited to have that combination of hard work as well as this fresh new perspective of a new person on the council, so thank you.
All right, any other comments or questions? Councilmember Ruff?
Well, I seconded the nomination, and I'd like to second Councilmember Flaherty's comments about it.
Very good. All right, I will just add that I also have great faith in Councilmember Stasburg. I've, in my meetings with her throughout last year, she was always very organized, very logical in her thinking, did her homework, and, and is, is very well-qualified, I think, for this position, so I'm glad that she is willing to serve. If there are no other comments or questions, Clerk Bolden, if you could please call the role on the parliamentarian position.
Yes, Councilmember Stasburg. It feels a little strange to be going first, but yes, thank you all. Rallo?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Zulik?
Yes.
Masari?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Ruff?
Yes.
Rana?
Yes.
And Rosenbarger?
Yes.
All right, congratulations to Councilmember Stasburg as our parliamentarian for 2024. So normally at this time, we would rearrange our seats, but I propose that we remain in our seats, and any seating requests from council members, if you could please email those to me before next week, and then we will establish permanent seats for the year at the next meeting. The President normally does sit in this position with the parliamentarian to my left and the Vice President to the right. We could go ahead and, and use these nameplates. I'm gonna hand this down to Andy. Councilmember Zulik, so we could go ahead and distribute these extra titles for the remainder of the meeting without having to play musical chairs. There you go. Is this, okay. All right, so our next order of business is assignments to council committees. So these roles are assigned by the Council President, and I have given these some thought already, in case I was not elected President. So let me just consult my list here. So we have different categories of service that council members, of boards and, categories of boards and commissions that council members serve on. So I'll ask Attorney Lucas to project these commissions or entities so that we can see what they are, and we'll do that by category. So the first category has to do with economic development, and we have first the Bloomington Economic Development Corporation Board. We heard from Jen Pearl earlier this evening during council comments, she is the president of the BEDC. It is a not-for-profit corporation dedicated to the retention, development, and attraction of quality jobs in Monroe County. Its work is guided by six officers from the business sector as well as ex-officio members from city government, county government, and the town of Elletsville. So for this part of the meeting, I will ask council members if they would like to serve in these roles to go ahead and nominate themselves. So is there anybody who would like to serve as our representative to the Bloomington Economic Development Corporation?
I nominate myself.
Okay. All right, Councilmember Asari, is anybody else wish to nominate themselves for this? Okay, very good. So we have Councilmember Asari for that role, and I would propose that we go through the economic development-related commissions, and then if there are no, if, if none of those solicit more than one nomination, we can vote on them as a group.
So next, we have Downtown Bloomington Incorporated. DBI is a nonprofit membership organization focused on the continued revitalization of downtown Bloomington. It was founded in 1984, and the mission is to educate the public about the benefits of a strong downtown, to facilitate public and private partnerships, and to provide unified leadership in order to strengthen and support downtown Bloomington as the heart of the city. The Board of DBI includes representatives from city and county governments, the nonprofit sector, downtown businesses, and Visit Bloomington. So would any council member like to serve in this capacity?
I nominate myself.
Second.
Don't be shy. Very good, Councilmember Zulik has been nominated. Anybody else interested? All right, very good. We'll move on to the Economic Development Commission of the County. So the Economic Development Commission of Monroe County is established under Indiana State Code for the financing of economic development and pollution control facilities, so this dates it a little bit. I think pollution control was an, an issue big in the seventies and eighties, although not irrelevant today. And it is, also reviews issues related to tax abatements on the county level, and here's economic development bond applications. So any council member wishes to serve on that body?
I nominate myself.
Okay, I will second that. Anybody else? All right, so we have Councilmember Asari for that. Then we have the Economic Development Commission of the city, and the Bloomington Economic Development Commission was created to enhance economic growth within the city limits. The five commissioners employ a variety of tools to stimulate redevelopment and increased employment, including tax abatements and economic development revenue bonds. Currently, Councilmember Flaherty is in the second year of a two-year term. Councilmember Flaherty, do you want to make any statement on that?
Yeah, I believe it's actually a four-year term that I'm in the middle of.
Four-year.
And, but have definitely less decided to resign from that position. I sent you all an email indicating that as well, in anticipation of hopefully taking on other responsibilities that have opened up in this transition from one term to another, and then also in turn to open this position to any other council member who may be strongly interested in it. So I hereby resign from the Economic Development Commission of the city.
I consequently nominate myself.
Very good. Well, thank you, Councilmember Flaherty, for your service. We have a second from Councilmember Rallo on Councilmember Asari's nomination. Is there any other council member who wishes to step up for the city economic development commission?
I would nominate myself.
Okay, seeing none. That rounds out the economic development-related positions, so we have nominees as follows. For the Bloomington Economic Development Corporation, Councilmember Asari. For Downtown Bloomington Incorporated, Councilmember Zulik. For the Economic Development Commission of the County, Councilmember Asari. And for the Economic Development Commission of the City, Councilmember Asari. So he would become our expert on economic development commissions, I believe. All right, so let's vote on those four positions. Pardon me? Oh, yes, we can have comment, certainly. Are there any comments on this set of nominees? Comments or questions? Yes, Councilmember Zulik.
If Councilmember Asari is to be given all three of these roles, I would like to direct all questions on economic development to him, and it will, there will be a forwarding email address in my email, should anyone ask me those questions. Thank you.
All right. Any other comments or questions? Then I will ask for Clerk Bolden to please call the role on those four appointments.
Okay, Councilmember Rallo?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Zulik?
Yes.
Masari?
Abstain.
Yes.
Ruff?
Yes.
Rana?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
And Stasburg?
Yes.
All right, very good. Thank you to my colleagues for taking on those positions. Next, we will move to the category of planning and transportation-related entities, and we have here, first of all, the Plan Commission. The Plan Commission is the land use and development policy body for the city, and is the decision-making body for site plan review, preliminary and final plat approvals, and final planned unit developments. The Commission acts in an advisory capacity to the common council for rezoning requests, preliminary PUDs, amendments to the Unified Development Ordinance, and the Plan Commission also advises the common council on the adoption of and amendments to the Comprehensive Plan. Are there any nominations, self-nominations for the Plan Commission?
I would like to nominate for the Plan Commission.
All right, we have Councilmember Stasburg, and a second from Councilmember Rosenbarger. Any other nominees? All right, very good. We will move on then to the Metropolitan Planning Organization. The Bloomington Monroe County Metropolitan Planning Organization is the metropolitan planning organization that serves the city of Bloomington, the town of Elletsville, and parts of Monroe County, as originally designated by the Governor of Indiana in 1982, before most of you all were born. The Bloomington Monroe County Metropolitan Planning Organization also includes Indiana University and Bloomington Transit as planning partners. Is there any member who would like to serve as our representative to the MPO?
I would nominate myself.
Second.
All right, we have Councilmember Rana nominated. Anybody else? Okay, very good. Then we will move on to the Parking Commission. The purpose of the Parking Commission is, in coordination with decision-makers and other entities, as is necessary or prudent, to develop, implement, maintain, and promote a comprehensive policy on parking that takes into account the entirety of and furthers the objectives of the city's comprehensive plan, to coordinate parking activities, to carry on educational activities in parking matters, to supervise the preparation and publication of parking reports, to receive comments and concerns having to do with parking matters, and to recommend to the common council and to appropriate city officials ways and means for achieving the city's comprehensive plan objectives through the administration of parking policies and the enforcement of parking regulations. And we have that wordy mission statement, we have council member, former council member Volan to thank for that. Very thorough mission statement. Who would like to serve or self-nominate for the Parking Commission?
I'd like to nominate myself for the Parking Commission.
All right, we have Councilmember Flaherty, has put his name forward. Anybody else?
Yes, Councilmember Rosenbarger has seconded.
All right, seeing nobody else, so let us consider these three positions together. For the Plan Commission, Councilmember Stasburg. For the Metropolitan Planning Organization, Councilmember Rana. For the Parking Commission, Councilmember Flaherty. Are there any questions or comments before we go to a vote?
I have a procedural question, Madam President.
Yes.
Do we need to vote on all of these, especially if they're in the, I mean, don't you appoint them?
No, I do not.
Okay, thank you.
Although I did, I, I'm just realizing that I think I reversed the agenda. I was supposed to do the council president appointments first, so my apologies.
That was confusing.
Yes, that's, that's, that's my fault. So I inadvertently reversed the agenda. We will do the president appointments to internal committees after this, these external committees. So again, Plan Commission, MPO, and Parking Commission, any other comments or questions? If not, Clerk Bolden, could you please call the role?
Yes, Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Zulik?
Yes.
Masari?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch that?
Yes.
Thank you. Flaherty?
Yes.
Ruff?
Yes.
Rana?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Stasburg?
Yes.
And Rallo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you to those members for their service. Next, we have a couple of entities that are related to sustainability. We have the Board of the Waste Reduction District of Monroe County. Earlier this evening, we heard from the Director of that district, Tom McGlasson, that was used to be called the Solid Waste Management District, now it is the Waste Reduction District of Monroe County. And the mission of the Waste Reduction District is to promote and contribute to long-term sustainability and a healthier environment by reducing the amount of waste going to final disposal. We recognize that waste reduction plays an important role in mitigating climate change and improving environmental quality, and we place our mission in this global and local context. So are there any members who wish to nominate themselves for service on that board? And I will nominate myself for that position. I've served there for several years.
I will second.
Thank you, Councilmember Zulik. Anybody else? All right, we will move on to the Bloomington Commission on Sustainability. The City of Bloomington Commission on Sustainability promotes economic development, environmental health, and social equity in our community for present and future generations. The Commission gathers and disseminates information, promotes practical initiatives and measures, monitors, and reports on our community's progress towards sustainability. Who would like to nominate themselves for this?
I would like to nominate Councilmember Rallo.
I would like to second Councilmember Rallo's nomination.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? All right, so those are the two that relate to sustainability. Myself for the Board of Waste Reduction District of Monroe County, and Councilmember Rallo for the Bloomington Commission on Sustainability. Are there any questions or comments? Councilmember Rallo?
Yes, I want to say first of all that I appreciate Councilmember Flaherty for being on the Sustainability Commission for the past few years, and I look forward to speaking with him about what he sees are the priorities and what has gone on and what the priorities are. So anyway, thank you for, for serving and hope to do at least as good a job as you. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? If not, I will ask Clerk Bolden to call the role on those two nominations.
Yes, Councilmember Zulik?
Yes.
Masari?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Ruff?
Yes.
Rana?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Stasburg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
And Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you to Councilmember Rallo and myself, I suppose, for that service.
Sorry.
Next, we will move on to the Citizens Advisory Committee for Community Development Block Grants. So this is the public body that reviews and recommends community development block grant funding for a variety of community projects. This is funding that comes from the federal government. The Housing and Urban Development Department gives a certain amount of funds according to their formula to the city of Bloomington every year to use for projects that benefit low-income communities. There are two advisory committees. One is for social services proposals, and the other is for physical improvements, so infrastructure-type proposals. Who would like to serve on the Social Services Advisory Committee?
I would like to nominate Councilmember Zulik.
Second.
Very good. Anybody else for the Social Services Advisory Committee? All right, Councilmember Zulik, and what about the Physical Improvements Advisory Committee?
I would nominate myself.
All right, Councilmember Rosenbarger, who has served on that at least one year, maybe longer. longer, would like to continue. Anybody else? All right, any comments or questions at this point on the CDBG Advisory Committee nominations? All right, so we have Councilmember Zulik for the Social Services Advisory Committee and Councilmember Rosenbarger for Physical Improvements Advisory Committee. Will the Clerk please call the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Assari?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Ruff? Rana?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Stossberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
And Zulik?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you to those colleagues. Next, we have a couple of tax advisory boards. We have a representative to the county's Food and Beverage Tax Advisory Commission. In order to coordinate and assist efforts of the county and city fiscal bodies regarding the utilization of food and beverage tax receipts, this advisory committee was established several years ago. The county and city legislative bodies must request the advisory commission's recommendations concerning the expenditure of any food and beverage tax funds collected under state law. Who would like to serve as our representative?
I would like to serve in that capacity. I'll nominate myself.
Very good. We have Councilmember Ruff as a nominee. Anybody else? All right, very good. We'll move on to the Public Safety Local Income Tax Committee of the County Local Income Tax Council. And here we need four council members to serve. They serve with representatives of the county council and the town of Ellisville. The Monroe County Local Income Tax Council serves as the adopting body in regard to certain local income tax rates per Indiana code. It is composed of four members: the Bloomington Common Council, the Ellisville Town Council, the Monroe County Council, and the Steinsville Town Council. Representatives of these member bodies sit on the Public Safety Local Income Tax Committee, which meets every summer to review applications for funding under Indiana Code 6-3.6-6-8, and consider other public safety local income tax needs in these jurisdictions. And the body makes recommendations on PS Lit tax rates and allocations to the Tax Council as a whole. So who do we have who would like to serve on this committee?
I would nominate myself.
Okay, we have Councilmember Rosenbarger.
I would also like to nominate myself.
Second.
Councilmember Zulik?
I'll also nominate myself.
Councilmember Ruff, and I will nominate myself as well.
Second.
Thank you. All right, very good. So we have councilmembers Ruff, Rosenbarger, Zulik, and myself to serve on that committee. Anybody else interested? Any questions about either the Public Safety Local Income Tax Committee nominations or the Food and Beverage Tax Advisory Commission nomination? All right, well then, I will ask the Clerk to call the roll on the Food and Beverage Tax Advisory Commission and the PS Lit Advisory Commission.
Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes.
Ruff?
Yes.
Rana?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Stossberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Zulik?
Yes.
Assari?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, very good. We have one more entity to which we need to appoint a representative, and that is the Utility Service Board, which oversees the Utilities Department, which is our water, our wastewater, and our stormwater utilities. And it oversees that department and coordinates operations along with city policies. So who do we have who would like to serve in that capacity?
I'd like to serve in that capacity. Nominate myself?
Second.
All right, Councilmember Flaherty is interested, and Councilmember Rallo has seconded. Anybody else? All right, any questions or comments about this position? Councilmember Flaherty?
Yeah, I can take the moment to say a couple of things. First of all is just to credit former Councilmember Jim Sims for his, at least four years of service in that role. I think it's an important role for the council, and he did a very good job in it. I was looking forward to carrying that work on. And second is also just to credit former head of Utilities Vic Kelson, who did a lot in his eight years to really get us on track with the utility service of the city. We were not at a sustainable rate with infrastructure replacement, and that's just one example of many of sort of the systems-level changes that Director, former Director Kelson helped implement that I look forward to making sure that we're following up on. And finally, that, just to note that we have large projects to consider early in this term around the Waste-to-Energy Study that is not quite complete but nearing completion. So it will be an important early issue for the Utility Service Board to grapple with. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Flaherty. Any other comments or questions before we vote? All right, seeing none. Clerk Bolden, if you could please call the roll on the appointment to the Utility Service Board.
Yes, Councilmember Ruff?
Yes.
Oh dear. Councilmember Rana?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Stossberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Zulik?
Yes.
Assari?
Yes.
And Flaherty?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Flaherty, for your willingness to serve. Now we will go back in the agenda and cover what I skipped over last time, my apologies, which is appointments to council committees. And these are made by the President of Council, and as I mentioned, I have already reflected on this with the idea that I may be voted to be President. So for the Climate Action and Resilience Committee, this is a committee that focuses on the city's efforts to reduce greenhouse gas emissions and increase community resilience in the face of climate change. Economic equity, environmental equity, and social equity in climate action fall under the purview of this committee. I would like to appoint Councilmember Flaherty, Councilmember Stossberg, Councilmember Rallo, and Councilmember Zulik to this committee, and I would like to appoint Councilmember Flaherty as the Chair. Next, we have the Jack Hopkins Social Service Funding Committee. The Jack Hopkins Committee focuses on the provision of social services, or the funding of social services, whether provided by public or private entities, particularly social services rendered in an emergency context. The committee, along with three city residents who are to be appointed later, make recommendations to the council on the annual allocation of monies in the Jack Hopkins Social Services Funding Program, which is part of the council budget. And for this committee, I would like to appoint councilmembers Rana, Assari, Ruff, and Stossberg. And I would like to appoint Councilmember Rana as Chair. Next, we have the Sidewalk Committee, which consists of four council members whose purpose is to make recommendations to the full council on the use of alternative transportation fund monies specifically budgeted for council-recommended sidewalk and traffic calming projects. And I understand this committee has a little bit of extra work this year because the 2023 Committee was not able to complete all of their recommendations. The only carryforward from last year who is still on the council is Councilmember Rosenbarger, so I would like to appoint her and ask her to chair, along with councilmembers Ruff, Stossberg, and Rana. Then we have our Interview Committees. We have a lot of work to do to appoint members of our community to serve in the volunteer roles on various boards and commissions of the city of Bloomington. And we do that by dividing up the many boards and commissions into three groups, and then dividing council into three groups of three members each, who will interview people for the committees and recommend appointments to the council as a whole. So for this year, Interview Committee A, I would like to appoint councilmembers Rosenbarger, Assari, and Stossberg. For Interview Committee B, I would like to appoint councilmembers Rana, Ruff, and Piedmont Smith. For Interview Committee C, I would like to appoint councilmembers Rallo, Flaherty, and Zulik. The Special Committee on Council Processes was created by action of the Council President in January of 2023. You know, it is called a special committee, so it is not a standing committee that automatically just continues forward. Under local code, a special committee ceases to function when it has completed its duties and made a report or recommendation to the council. While this committee did present a report and recommendations to the council in December 2023, it also recommended that the committee should continue to meet in 2024. So the council is made up of four members who meet as needed to discuss and make recommendations on matters affecting the council's own processes, building on the work that was begun last year. The committee's purview includes the process of making appointments to and making the best use of resident boards and commissions, incorporating constituent input in our decision-making, and actively implementing the principles of diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging. For this committee, I would like to appoint councilmembers Rallo, Flaherty, Rana, and Piedmont Smith. And as Council President, I would like to chair this committee myself. I don't believe a vote is required on these appointments. Council Attorney Lucas, I don't believe we need to vote on continuing this committee. Is that correct?
No. Through your actions tonight as President, you're re-establishing this committee, and you're also correct that these assignments of council members to the committees are actions by the President, so there's no vote needed. Thank you.
Very good. Are there any comments or questions about assignments to council committees? And I would ask my colleagues to look at the boards and commissions for the interview committees, because many openings, many appointments expire at the end of this month, and we want to look at the applications and seek to fill or extend those appointments swiftly. And with advance thanks to the Office of the City Clerk, they have traditionally helped us with that appointment process, so thank you, Clerk Bolden. I, are there any questions? No, okay. When we did the appointments of council members to boards and commissions, I failed to also mention that we could at this time, if there are any appointments ready for resident advisory commissions, boards, and commissions, we could take those up this evening, but I do not believe there are any. Am I mistaken? No, we don't have any at this point. Hopefully, in the coming weeks, we will. So now we come to the point of additional public comment. If there's any member of the public who would like to give comments on items not on the agenda, now is another time to do that. So you will have up to five minutes. Please state your name for the record. And before you begin, Mr. MG, if Mr. Lucas could give the announcement for our participants on Zoom, please.
Yes, if there are members of the public that wish to speak, please raise your hand in Zoom or send a chat to the meeting host.
Thank you, and we will start here in council chambers.
Well, good evening, council, both returning and new. Congratulations, Madam President. Excellent choice. I want to just commend you on your work in the past as the hardest-working person on council, and your drive and dedication is one that I believe all of the council should look to. I'm Christopher MG from the Greater Bloomington Chamber of Commerce. We are a nonprofit member organization, where I stand before you as 850 entities. Eighty percent of them are small business and nonprofits. We are the voice of business, better business, better community. And every year, we survey our members to get a sort of a feel of where they are at on issues, and it goes through my advocacy council and into the Board of Directors for approval, and this is the 2024 version of it, which we will unveil at Friday's Legislative Preview, which I know Councilmember Stossberg will be there, and it should be on our website as of Friday, and as we move forward in the year, I'm sure I will get to some of those specifics on there. But a little bit about the Bloomington Chamber, we are not the U.S. Chamber, we are not the State Chamber of Commerce. We pride ourselves on offering a more progressive, more modern outlook on the needs of this unique community than, you know, our chamber peers and really the Bloomington Chambers past. During my five-and-a-half-year tenure here at the Chamber, I'm proud to be a part of multi-award-winning programs that we've been able to do to enhance our community, which includes COVID Business Resource Page, our DEI training, and our distribution of PPE to local businesses and nonprofit. So as we start, as kind of opening day here, as it kind of feels, there's this fresh outlook, and it's great to be back in the hall. With your colleagues and with the Chamber, we're going to have some disagreements, but we always, you know, must not be disagreeable. Let it be said that in 2024, that we brought back civility to both public discourse in this hall and the community at large. While we can question one's logic, we should never cast out on one's motives. We all wake up each morning with the same motivation to make this community the best place to work, live, and play. I more than represent the Chamber. I am a Sunny Slope resident here in town, a homeowner, a parent with a child at Templeton Elementary School, and a coach of basketball at Twin Lakes, which I didn't write down, but I am. I, like the Chamber, remain vested in these outcomes that we are talking about. I hope one day we see a city that is not just a little blue dot in a sea of red, but a beacon of openness, hope, and economic opportunity that is the model of the rest of this state. While the issues before us can be serious, we shall never take ourselves too seriously. The council is not Congress, it is not academia, it's not about our personal pedigree. These things sort of mean nothing to a residence and municipality. Basic essential city service, sanitation services, clean water, safe streets, a vibrant downtown, and scenic parks are what we look toward. This should be provided by a government that's both efficient and transparent. And we must never forget about the need for collaboration. There is a world outside of Bloomington, and we must take an effort to work with our county colleagues through, and through public-private partnerships that sort of enhance what we are doing. When I look ahead, I feel very optimistic on the direction we are going and confident we are going to address the two main issues of the Thompson administration has pointed out, which is both housing and public safety. The new administration, I think, is off to a great start. Mayor Thompson's push for an independent city audit is something we've long pushed for in the Chamber, going back to the Lit Increase. We appreciate the efforts in clearing the dangerous homeless encampments in a kind and compassionate way. The recent gun violence with shooting near Wheeler has us concerned, and this is one thing, as Councilmember Rallo mentioned, we need to address public safety in a holistic approach and keeping our residents safe. I thank you for your time tonight, and look forward to working with all of you in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. MG. Any other public comments from people here in the chambers?
Hello, Steve Volan citizen. I come to request a height-adjustable podium. I know it's kind of meta. No, I also come to wish you wisdom during, by my reckoning, based on records from the Clerk's office, what will be the 54th term of this city's council. clerk's office, what will be the 54th term of this city's council. During this term, you will observe the 150th anniversary of Bloomington cityhood in 1876, before which it was either just a town or not even incorporated at all. There's a new mayor, and with all due respect to Councilmember Ruff's prior tenure, a majority new council. The outset of such an auspicious new term is a good time to think anew about how one does things. To that end, I'd like to offer three general thoughts about how you're about to do business, some of which I'm happy to hear you've already begun contemplating tonight. Take this advice for what it's worth from a recently and contentedly retired colleague. Number one, I urge you to reconsider letting every member of the public who wants to speak to an issue do so. This council has historically let every person who wants to speak to an issue do so. Podium time, though, is not infinite. The most toxic issue last term was the one that lasted six straight hours of regular session time, the vast majority of which was public comment. The record-length meeting triggered my introduction of the reasonable hour ordinance, by the way. You're welcome. But midnight is still too late for meetings. This is why some cities require public comment sign-ups in advance to gauge demand for valuable meeting time. In the same way that council already limits podium time during this period of open public comment, the same kind of limit can be established for comment on any item of legislation. Say a half-hour maximum is set and there are more than 10 people who wish to address an issue, it's a sign that the item deserves an automatic third reading perhaps, during which no one who first spoke can speak again. This is why some cities require sign-ups in advance before the meeting to gauge demand for podium time. Item two, it's time to also consider putting time limits on the council periods of question and answer and council debate over an item of legislation. Even councilmembers, when given a time limit, rise to the occasion. In land use committees early as 2016, when we had to be done by a certain time and each councilmember had only four minutes to make observations, everyone, even Councilmember Sterbaum, even me, met that limit. If there is a clear need for debate, any member can ask to speak again, but they'll again be limited to that four-minute or whatever limit. If an issue deserves a fuller discussion than there's time for, it can be moved to a third reading or a fourth. You shouldn't be afraid of it. Councils are already an exercise in triage. You're going to have to do triage at some point to keep up with your workload. Regardless of how you triage the flood of legislation and constituent appeals, if you're going to commit to meetings that end not by midnight but by 11:00 or even 10:00 p.m., something has to give. If Major League Baseball can implement a pitch clock to make games shorter, so can a city council. You have complete control over your schedule. You can go further and specify the time that an item will not be heard before. If item two is scheduled for 8:30 and item one ends a few minutes early, the council can simply take a recess until the published time. If the item runs long, that's a significant portion of the meeting that members of the public interested in just one issue don't have to sit through. It was the opinion of a few of your predecessors, including some of my former colleagues who shall remain nameless, that the public should be required to sit through all of our meetings to get to the item that they were interested in because it's educational. I don't think I have to tell you how paternalistic an attitude that was. You have the chance to make council meetings more accessible with modest changes like these. Finally, it's time to rethink Budget Week. It's time to think of budgeting as a year-round activity. You don't have to approve payroll and claims, but you should get to know each department's budget better by actually asking for and reading line items, looking at how they spend money. It'll teach you as much about the department as a tour would. Whether you take up committees again or not, I'm agnostic on that point, I think it's significant that of the 26 second-class cities around the state that do divide work among standing committees, fully 18 of them, more than any other committee, have finance committees or budget committees. I learned a lot from serving on the Parking Commission, by the way. I'm applying. I don't, I never had to apply before, but just want to get an interview. But I learned a lot from just digging into financial records. However you choose to do it, though, it's time for the council to get into the financial weeds. Good luck, you all. I'll be watching with interest. Have a good term.
Thank you, Mr. Volin. Mr. Lucas, is there anybody on Zoom who would like to give a public comment?
No, not that I see.
Anybody else in council chambers? All right, seeing none, we will come back to our agenda. The next item is matters of council schedule. Mr. Lucas, is there anything to discuss here?
No, the council has its first regular session scheduled for next Wednesday, so we will see you all then.
Very good. I will just add that I ask my colleagues to stay after this evening, and we will try to get a photo of the group for publicity purposes, well, mainly for the website. Thank you all very much. I believe that's it, so we are now adjourned.